The first one, other announcements, the first one is that DMV will be here on the 19th. I think there's some confusion about the Tuesday, 10 to 3, they're on the third Tuesday of the month. We've got one correspondence for the Delaware Valley Arts Alliance. They're excited to present the 12th Annual Big Eddie Film Festival once again here in Narisburg from Thursday, the 28th of September to Sunday, the 1st of October. This year's programming includes our Thursday evening BEFF Ignite screenings that will help support local nonprofits like the Single White and Filmmakers Dinner on Saturday evening. For these events, we're requesting permission to utilize a portion of the Western Sullivan Public Library parking lot adjacent to the Tuscan Theater and walkway to the community center, specifically the Rosa Parking facing the Tuscan Theater, but not including the reserved handicap parking spaces, to place food vendors and set up designated seating area for participants. We're requesting this space for use at the following times, 4 to 8 p.m. on Thursday, the 28th, includes two hours for setup and breakdown, and 5 to 9 on Saturday, September 30th, includes two hours for setup and breakdown. Certified certificate of insurance will be provided to the Town of Tuscan and any additional required parties for the period of use. My apologies for not being able to present in person, would of course be happy to answer any questions or provide any additional information. Sincerely, Ariel, the Executive Director. And the second is a Halloween request from the Tuscan Youth Commission for road closure and park usage. My reading is Lauren. Do you want to tell the board what you want and then we'll do it later on through the place to go? That's why we...
Sure, sure. So Tuscan Youth is looking to host our Halloween in the Park on Saturday, October 21st, from 4 to 10, which would include or require a road closure from 4 to 6:30 from the intersection of Second Ave and Third Ave through the intersection of Second Ave and Fourth Ave, so that our trunk or treat can set up there and all the cars can be out, the kids can be safe, and then close traffic also through Third Ave for one-way parking, so that people can get in and out of the park safely.
Does the board have any questions, Lauren, for that? Attached is a timeline of the other events that have been down there.
Do we have an estimate on how many people would be attending based on the year that it was there?
It's not a really registered event. Yeah, I know in the past, in the past, we have had anywhere from 300 to 500 people probably, not all at one time.
And you're doing this the week before Halloween as opposed to on Halloween?
Yes, yeah, the 21st.
I don't have any questions. I don't know if any of the board has questions. I mean, any issues that you've had in the past? I mean, I've come in here for the last three years, so...
Yeah, no. And like last year, we were up at Fort Delaware, but a majority of the time before that, we were always down on them.
But that was a different type of setup that you used before Delaware?
Yeah. We did a haunted house.
Right. It was a great event.
We're hoping to bring it back next year.
Are there going to be peppermint patties available?
I'm sure we could arrange that.
I don't have any further questions.
You need a motion?
No, I'd rather do it when Jane's here.
Oh, right, okay.
She's, Jane is over at the UDC giving a presentation for the town, but I know Lauren had things to do, so I wanted her to get on first and out. Dismissed. Thank you. Payment of bills. The general fund expended $9,171.99. I've got a bunch of extra numbers. Highway 1,001...
It's 1 million.
Well, it was a day.
That's not the numbers I was looking at earlier.
What?
Thank you.
My face keeps jumping. I mean, that is the first, I just had to calm down a little bit.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Water, $18,135.48. Sewer, $17,511.67. The lighting district, $792.06. Escrow accounts, $633.75. Capital Highway, $555,551.64. And our capital water of $63,460.05, which should add up to $900,477.36. The Capital Highway project, largest number, is the Culver project. Greg, you and Jane went over the bills. Any questions that came up or arose or...
Everything looks like it's in order.
Okay. A motion to pay the bills as presented.
I'll make that motion.
A second to the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? I opposed. Again, our highway and division reports are posted online. We will do some of them here in public. Some we are going to wait for Jane to come back to. The assessors report during the month of August, the attended a Southern County Assessors meeting in the Town of Thompson. Some assessors reported on their small claims court session with Adventine properties, claims being a common problem for all. Our trial is set for September 15th on one case Tuscan has with Adventine. Negotiations of a settlement before the trial was unsuccessful. Data was updated and submitted to Telescan for the processing of the school tax bills. The August sales report was prepared and submitted to the Department of Taxation and The Tuscan Youth Commission, I'm going to leave the Narisburg Water Sewer Committee meeting and the grants until Jane comes back in. Working with the higher department to get the storage unit in place so we can begin the transfer of supplies. The weekly after-school program, 3 to 6 p.m., will begin at the end of this month. Participating in the logging days on October 7th, from 11 to 5 p.m. The preparations for Halloween are underway for Saturday, October 21st. The Kalahari Indoor Water Park, November 10th and 11th. There are still approximately seven rooms available. Please mark the calendars for December 2nd, as Christmas planning is underway. And whose Tuscan Youth service is joint forces with Tuscan Social to bring back the plastic recycling, which is a TREX program, which was announced last month in the energy report? In the energy report, we got another second quarter payment from the horse transfer, so that's been moving along well. And my understanding is that they're using the Town of Liberty as a pass-through for the next grant.
That's what I heard. So we're basically done?
I believe, no, we've got another one or two quarters, I believe. But they're timely with their paperwork and we've had no issues that I'm aware of. And since Jane will tell me if I go into hers, before we walk into old business, I will open the floor to public comment starting here first.
I think...
Sure.
I have a question about the Tuscan Youth Halloween party. We had gotten this in the mail. It was the agenda for, I guess, for the year. And I see that October 21st, you had it already scheduled for Fort Delaware. And why are they changing it?
Lauren, do you have an answer for, I believe you had some issues with Fort Delaware?
Yeah, one of the biggest issues at this point is that Fort Delaware is kind of at the mercy of the town for water usage, and at that time... I'm sorry, thank you. The water will be off there, so we don't have bathrooms to use there.
But you used it last year?
Yeah.
And the water was on last year?
Mm-hmm.
Why are they turning it off? Can we check into that? I mean, you have the bathroom facilities, you have the pavilion. I understand that last year, the kids had a great time, that everybody loved it.
It's also a matter of being short-staffed, where a group of six women, we don't have the hands this year to put it together that we did last year.
So moving it to the playground?
Well, last year was a haunted house.
Right.
So the, I don't know if you went, before it was actually reinvented into a haunted...
Right, I heard.
So, but we did actually have a meeting with John Conway the other day, and I received a text from John that said it won't work this year.
Oh. And no explanation?
Part of it was the water and part of it was short-staffing.
Did they help you staff it last year?
Mm-hmm.
Are you going to have more people? What are you going, how are you going to set it up down on the playground this year? Are you going to have porta-potties?
We're not, we're not doing a haunted house, though.
Okay, so it's just going to be the trunk or treat? You're going to have porta-potties for this?
There is a trunk or treat, there is a DJ. There is a company hired to do a fire show. There will be, hopefully, a tent, if we can source the funds to get a tent, like a pavilion style tent. What else is on the list?
The movie.
And a movie projector with a big movie screen home.
All right, well, they had such a good time last year at the fort.
We're hoping next year to bring it back to Fort Delaware.
Oh, that's a really shame. Okay, whatever, this is my question, thank you.
Let me raise a flats issue which has nothing to do with the, quote, "big issue", which has everybody all riled up. And it may be an issue that impacts other communities, too. I guess my question is, I'm not sure what resources exist to address the problem. And the problem basically is wildlife management. We have an ever-increasing deer herd down on the flats. We have a flock of geese which have now seemed to have moved in on a semi-permanent basis. We don't have a hunting season down there like other communities do. You know, the deer that settle in there are pretty well safe. We have a relatively mild winter, and all of those doe's dropped fawns just exponentially gets larger and larger and larger. I don't know what the answers are, I don't know what the resources are, but unless we address it in some fashion, the way that that herd will get culled is vehiculately. They're going to get hit by cars. That's inevitably what happens. It's going to be too many deer, too many cars, too many people, all in close proximity. Like I said, I don't know what resources are available and what the correct approach is, but it is becoming an issue, and it'll only become more of an issue as time goes by. They don't have natural predators down there, there's no hunting season, there's no hunting clubs. It just grows and grows, and there it is. So I just lay it out. There is something for the board to consider going forward.
Trying to think of something witty to say to you.
I thought that was my job.
But it, yeah, it is a problem down there. We see it on Bridge Street when they come walking.
Yeah, they come strolling.
Walking through the intersection, over here, on a regular basis.
They live in the country. It's a safe community for deer, but unfortunately, it's...
I think there used to be less when the trains went by.
Probably, and some of our former neighbors also weren't adverse to taking a pot shot occasionally, some of the wildlife.
Yeah, we don't need that. I can give Regent three calls, see if they've got anything. I don't know what the answer would actually be. I see what they did in White Lake, but I don't think we've got that bad of a problem.
No, not yet, but again, it continues to, each spring.
I do know for people that have riverfront property, if they've got an issue with the geese walking, that they do sell a wire or rope fence that only is about four, five inches that the geese will not step over, and it actually does work. You do what your neighbor does if it's kind of...
Yes.
Other comments? Jane got you, only by a second.
Jane London, Evergreen Lane, Narisburg. Just wanted to find out if anybody's aware of, they're starting the survey, Royal Oaks I called up the name on one of the pins. They're surveying for the Boy Scout property. I don't know if this is something that's for this board or for zoning, but I'm just curious.
You're talking about on the end of like Evergreen going past, going down to like Spearsy's Cabin in that area down there that you're seeing?
I don't know the cabin.
Okay.
But they're kind of all random. I walked the area, get exercise, and I started seeing these stakes.
They have been surveying the Boy Scouts. That's part of the acquisition by the, I'm going to use the word land trust, but I don't believe that they're a land trust, yes, with a conservancy group that's going to be taking over that from the Boy Scouts until such time.
A gentleman I spoke to, he was a subcontractor to a subcontractor, so he didn't have a whole lot to just say...
Yeah, if you go along 97, you'll see some of the survey markers by the 10-mile, where they've been doing them, so...
It's a different, they say PCP standard, it's like a pin that everything stretches out, that's their spot in the world that they can measure everything else at. Just wanted to know.
But that, the town is aware of that, that's been going on for over a year now at this point.
It's on my property and I, it's a little concerning.
Yeah, they're just getting closer to that end of the property.
And the other thing is I want to make sure, still on the record, that there's deed restrictions in Evergreen Lane, so if they wanted a bill. And the concern is there's an electrical line...
The understanding is that the conservancy is taking it over and holding the property until New York State is going to turn around and make it a forest management area, so there'll be no construction.
Okay, that's it, thanks.
Is there a estimated timeline of that handover?
No, no, it's, my conversation with the Boy Scouts is they're seeing it at least a couple more years.
Yeah.
I'm glad to see you have your microphones, are they on?
It is.
They are, they are, because it's very difficult to hear in the back. Y'all have soft voices.
It'll be better now, because I'm actually talking into it.
What's that?
It'll be better when I talk into it, I had it turned.
Yeah.
So that I wasn't...
We appreciate it, because you have soft voices and it's difficult to hear. Now, I have a couple of items, I'll try to be quick. The first item is traffic going down by the feed mill and the laundrette restaurant there. The cars are parking on the side where there is a sign that is now hidden stating, "No Parking," and I'd like to know when and if the town is going to cut down the shrubbery and allow that sign to be visible to people that want to go to that restaurant, because it's going to be a problem. I go back and forth every day a couple of times, and there have been times when I can barely get through, there'd be a truck coming at me, and it's just dangerous, dangerous for people. And I've noticed there's some graffiti, which we never had before, on the underpass by the feed mill there, and I'd like to see the graffiti that's showing up in different parts of the town, taken care of by the town, if you would. And, oh, I had a question. Who owns this building? Does the town own this building?
Yes.
All the way up? So what, does the DVAA pay us rent?
Yes.
Okay, uh-huh, just thinking about that. You know, if we needed extra space. What is over in that closet there?
Court files.
Court files.
And there's storage and then court files behind that, and then there's infrastructure for the telephone and Wi-Fi.
Uh-huh, okay, because we were discussing the kitchen, I think, the last meeting a while ago, and this is a beautiful kitchen here, and it was the pride and joy of the senior citizens some years ago. We had all kinds of activities down here, and I'm sure you can all remember them, from dinners to wedding receptions, parties, and everything's here. And then you did the bathrooms and fixed them over. I think it wouldn't cost too much to get the whole thing on the roll again. The kitchen is a standard commercial kitchen.
We're in the process, and I believe that that will be in Jane's grants, where we've had the architect come in and start talking with the different offices here on space needs and coming up with a plan to utilize more space.
And I was also thinking about, excuse me, Delaware Valley Arts Alliance has a lot of room. They have three stories there. And in the future, if we're thinking of putting in public bathrooms, you might consider asking them to donate to the town a certain space there, maybe towards the post office, somewhere on the first floor. That would be handicap accessible and easy to use. They have a lot of space, they have three floors. What else do I have? And is there any way I can get information without handing it a FOIA for the, down at the playground, there's a path that was put in, Guston Path, to nowhere?
I know where you're coming out.
Yeah. I'd like to know what the cost of that was, because it's totally useless. It's just been there, and I'm just curious, okay? All right, I think I've covered everything. Thank you.
Oh, there's the fort. Is anybody on the phone?
No. Will you run across and carry her back over?
Well, she normally doesn't speak for long periods of time, so I'm kind of surprised. Moving into old business, on the park project, we have received no bids on that. We do have one thing that we need to do, we do need a resolution to authorize the additional payment to Charles Woods for the revisions in the amount of $4,812.50. And then as a board, we need to determine how we wish to move forward. But I will start with, I will make a motion to authorize the additional payment to Charles Woods in the amount of $4,812.50.
And that's for the design that's already been done?
That is for the two designs that were done, yes.
I'll second that.
Further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. As I mentioned at the special meeting, the UDC wants a review of this, being that it's in the river management plan and within the corridor. I spoke with Carrie Engelhardt and advised her that I would be putting that together for her, to put it in. At this point, at this point, I'm going to take a long pause and let Jane come in. I don't know if she's smiling or not.
Smiling, we turn.
Those eyes look...
Just kidding.
Can you ring up?
We don't hit the...
I haven't done any of your reports, but I am in old business. We have just authorized the additional payment to Charles Woods, which we voted on in favor. And I was just starting a conversation with the board with what we want to do as far as a rebid process on this. I just advised the board that I need to file with the UDC for their review that they've requested. I spoke with Carrie earlier and told her that that would be coming. At this point in time where we're at, I can't see putting it up to bid right now. We would be bidding in October for something that's not going to be built. I think that if the board wishes to move forward, looking into December would give us time. I know at the last meeting, we had discussed the cost of a bathroom, and that would be contingent on if we accepted the bids on whether it would be done. At this point, I would need the time to do the UDC review. If we were to bid in December, ask for a return on bids in February, that would, I believe, be enough time to at least get somebody interested in it, being that it's the wintertime and they're not working and waiting to break down two. If we got the bids returned, if they were accepted by the board, we could look for a May of 2024 completion date for it. And I know that it was mentioned to the board about other options. We could also look at other options in the meantime to see if they fulfill what they want. Discussion.
I'll start.
Thank you.
I personally think before we put any more resources towards this, we should have a substantive discussion about how to work around the bathrooms being required. I know that the cement slab is one of the things that defines a place of assembly.
Yeah.
To find out what our other options are, to number one, save money, and to number two, perhaps get a workaround around the restrooms.
Yeah, I would, I think we should have a committee meeting about it, different options. We can't really discuss, you know, come up with construction plans here, but go to some Plan Bs and Cs that are smaller. I think, you know, when the building inspector said it's an assembly building, rather than try to redefine it, we need to respect how big it was, and that's why I voted against, you know, moving forward on that one. So I think, yeah, we should look at some other options.
I think it needs to be revisited a little bit, you know, it's obviously a bone of contention in the town, so it needs to be rethought.
Shall I continue forward with the UDC?
Do you have to propose a plan to them?
I can use the 20 by 24 plan, but nothing says that if they approve it, doesn't mean that we do it. It's just, let's at least be a couple steps ahead of if we come to a position where the board says, okay, this is what we want to do, at least we'll know whether we had approval or what areas of disapproval we met.
To me, it makes sense that we are not obliging ourselves to anything, to proceed with that, and what if it gets turned out, then we've got information we don't have now. So I would say yes, continue with that myself.
Is everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. And you give them the whole plan, right?
Yeah, yeah, I can give them something that, you know, this is what we're proposing, and if they accept it, doesn't mean we have to do it. But it lets us know we're on the right track there.
Could it be presented in a way that anything that was less of a footprint is also being approved, so that if we do come up with a contingency plan, that we don't have to do that twice? Perhaps?
Yeah, I think that's the way I would present it to them, that this is the largest that we're looking at. If it's something that's less, am I going to... If it's something that's less, am I going to need to come back or are you going to? Because, as I said, I'm still awaiting a definition of a public facility. You know, they haven't given me a definition of a public facility, so if we were to put up, say, favors and sunshades, is that a public facility?
Yeah.
You know, without having that definition, it makes it hard. But I will jump through the hoops, because we don't want to be the bad neighbors to the upper tower of the river. Yeah. I did not do your reports.
Okay. I'll start with Water and Sewer Committee report. The committee met on September 5th, which was a Tuesday instead of a Monday, because it was February, at 8:00 AM. We reviewed the correspondence that we had received, and we announced that Delaware Engineering has submitted on time the grant for us with regards to the let type inventory, which is required by the federal government. A new pump was required for the sewer system on Kirk Road. Due to the nature of the job, it's being installed by an outside company. So that was the report there. The grants report, oh, what did I forget? The CAC, the grants report. Little Lake Erie Project, it appears to be progressing as per timetable. I guess everybody has noticed that it looks like a real bridge is going to happen real soon. So I'm happy that that's slated to be completed by November, first week of November, I think. So I'm sure it looks like they will make it. Water infrastructure project, Delaware Engineering, well, I just said that. It's coordinated by Delaware Engineering. We're waiting for the Department of Health reports. It's okay to go ahead with the water tower. Pavilion project, okay. At the time of this writing, I contracted Sullivan 180 for the pavilion project to ask them if we could have an extension. They haven't, they haven't said no, but they haven't said yes. So we'll let them know what we've decided for this board meeting and see where we go from there. We have been, it appears we've been awarded the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation project to develop an open space and recreation plan for the town of Tustin. Now, I'd like to describe and inform everybody on the board and in the public what an open space and recreation plan for the town of Tustin means. It's actually, I'm pretty proud of it, to tell you the truth. Who's with me on that? The Conservation Advisory Council has had several meetings open to the public. They're informational. And Delaware Highlands Conservancy came, and they instructed us about, I'm giving a little instruction here, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
About connectivity, which is a term used by environmentalists. And it means that ecosystems are connected so that they support each other, whether it be plant life, habitat of dragonflies, box turtles, et cetera, et cetera. So the environmentalists measure the percentage of connected landmass in areas. The United States has essentially connected landmass like that of about 35%. 35%. I'm getting this right, Don. Tustin has connected landmass above 80%. Above 80%. New York State DEC has found this area as having global significance, and they've reported that in their, the New York State Open Space Plan, for two cycles, which represents eight years. Our comprehensive plan says the reason so many people live here is because of the open spaces. We need to protect this. We're getting changes of ownership of a big tract of land. We have a lot of open space. We need to have a plan for it. So that is what this open space and recreation, which means that we can develop recreational areas in our open space. So it's a very important document that will be coming from that. It's a 50-50 match, and it's a two-year grant. Number five, technical assistance grant application to the UDC was submitted, and the purpose for that was to get the match for this grant. And I just came from that meeting to defend that application. The building committee has met with Buck Moorhead Architect to develop a plan for reconfiguring Town Hall, so the Town Hall offices and the public space. And lastly, on grants, the UDC monies from last year's grant, a check was just signed over Tustin today, correct?
Yes, we signed it, we signed the form for it.
And that's the, that's my grants report. Any questions from the board, especially on the open space plan?
You had said you did talk to the open space plan, and that one of the things that came from the conversation was possibly getting the New York State DEC involved?
Yes, we've already contacted, Peter Manning has contacted DEC. They'll be involved, but because they don't, they go slower than we do. We're slow, but we're a township. They're a state, and they're slower than we are, so we'll work with them.
Is Peter Manning the lead on the?
No, we would be hiring a consulting firm, MJ Engineering, that has experience in open space plans. They've done Poughkeepsie, they've done other places, Bethlehem, New York. They did another one up by Albany. They've done several in New York State. And Peter will be our man on the street kind of. You know, when I was writing the grant, and clearly I couldn't do it by myself, because I told Peter biodiversity just doesn't roll off my tongue. And you'd need to know those kinds of facts. So he really did the lion's share of that.
Can I ask a question about the building committee?
Yeah.
So after Buck Moorhead makes the recommendations for the reconfiguration, what are next steps after we have that information?
We're going to, by understanding, is that we will take the information that he's got, we will discuss it as a board, and then go forward with what recommendations that he would have. Recommendations, whether or not we've got enough space to use here. One of the, and the board will get a copy of the questionnaire that's going to be going out within the next couple of days to each of the divisions and departments. Having enough community space, and then what we have to utilize. You're going to see things on there such as sharing space, sharing desks, you know, to use the most of the space that you've got. And that'll be some of the questions that you'll see on there, you know, how often do you entail hall? How often do you have to do something? Can you share a desk with somebody? Much like planning and zoning is done before.
And will, in terms of community space especially, will there be a rollout before we commit to anything? I mean, will there be a chance for public comment, that type of thing?
Yeah, because we're going to need to use public funds in order to do it. I know one of the things was that probably this room would be cut in half to be used for the court.
Well, and also probably the kitchen space will open up. We don't need such a large kitchen, so.
So yes, there'll be time to comment on it. And he's going to make a presentation to the board, so that will be part of it, much like we've had with Becky with the sewer and water.
And just for everyone's edification, the courts have very specific needs that include proprietary paperwork, security considerations, and that type of thing. So I think we're looking to improve.
And that also includes the town clerk's office and the supervisor's office, personnel records, death certificates, birth certificates, marriage licenses, something that we're in violation of right now.
I just wanted to give people more context for the discussion. Thank you.
And Jane, did we go into that with other questions, or how did we end up there? Do we have anything else from you?
I don't think so.
Okay.
As long as the board understands the open space and that we do have a commitment to pay 50% back, but we have a lot of in-kind that we can use, and that's really going on.
50% of what?
What?
50% of what?
$75,000 a year, so it's $37,500.
Could you speak a little, Jane, could you just speak a little bit louder?
So our commitment is 37,500 a year, of which we have, I asked for quite a bit from the UDC and a lot of in-kind, so won't be close to that at all.
And we'll be able to use things like the Conservation Advisory Council's time that they put into it as an in-kind service.
Right.
Your service, the board's service, any of us that do that would have.
Right, right. There's an awful lot that we can charge for. We can charge for use of this room for our meetings. So there's a lot of in-kind.
Can I add something about the UDC?
Yeah.
I was at the banquet for the award winners for the UDC this week, which was very, very nice. One thing that the UDC president, chairman of the board or president of the board brought up is that Pennsylvania, state of Pennsylvania and state of New York right now are not contributing the monies that have been promised to them, and they have been asking the public to write to their state government to advocate for that money being distributed per the budget plan. You can go to their website, and it will walk you through how to do that, if that's something that you care about or are passionate and want to follow up against. This microphone is running out of battery.
4.2 under old business is 93 Main Street. We discussed about the parking lot being lined, and I talked to Don, he does not have the ability to do it, so he and I are both going to contact the county and have them line it just like they lined the one out here. Still awaiting the roof repair, digging the perimeter for the one issue with the leak. I talked to Don about that. I don't know if he's going to be able to do it due to being down a highway man, so I may have to have that done by somebody else, but we will keep informed of that. 4.3, Main Street lighting. We are still awaiting a SIM card for the lights. That's why they're not working.
What does a SIM card mean?
It's the same thing that's in your cell phone. The communication by either the town when it's set up or currently our contractor who's doing the lighting, the reason the lights are on is because they can't communicate with the.
So we have lights with no brains?
Pretty much. That's the easiest way. And after waiting two weeks for a SIM card, they told me tonight from Verizon that we have to order one from the manufacturer of the computer that is called the machine-to-machine that they communicate with. So I will let the contractor do that tomorrow. Is there any other old business that I've missed?
Did you want to bring up anything about, what did we talk about at the workshop? Wifi?
That's, yeah. Along with the Main Street lighting, we did speak about the wifi. I did have a return from NIPA that said that they had found a rate of $390 a month, not the 900. So I guess this would be a good time to find out if the board wishes to continue forward with that. That would be roughly $4,000 a year?
As opposed to 12.
But what are we getting? It sounds to me that all we get from it is the ability to use cell phones, and everybody can use a cellphone.
Yeah, it sounds like we embarked on this at a time when it was a dead zone.
Right.
And now the cell service is much better. Probably every business on Main Street has wifi. In some ways, are we subsidizing in an area that doesn't need the?
That's what I think.
Yeah. I mean, it's, when this was first discussed, it was a need, and now it's not.
I don't use wifi. Shall I notify NIPA and the contractor of that?
No, we're not interested. Do you need a resolution or no?
I don't think I need a resolution. I just need to know what the board's pleasure is at this point.
I don't support it.
Have we, to Kevin's point, have we heard anything disparaging from the festivals or any of the merchants about the current situation? Since the time we started pursuing this versus now, are we still hearing those things?
I think we only hear them on the ball field, and that down tomorrow, and then we'll cover that.
Correct. I know we, I, not we, I've spoken with the chief of the fire department about attempting to do something to get better signal down there for when they use it as a landing zone, but that's very preliminary.
And there might be other sources of money. For something like that, that's an emergency, there might be other sources. But for the businesses on Main Street, I don't, I mean, it doesn't seem necessary.
I will move into new business if we've got nothing else in old business. Anything else in old business? Fall cleanup day. We have 9,000, 9.89 tons of credit.
I switched your numbers.
I see that. So continuing on with that, 5.1, the Tustin Youth Road Closure Park usage for Saturday, October the 21st. I would look for a motion to authorize the request from the Tustin Youth.
I'll make that motion. Oh, is that what you're asking?
That's what I'm asking.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it. Do we have further discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? 5.2, the fall cleanup. 9.89 tons of solid waste remaining for the fall cleanup. The date is set as October the 7th, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Tires will be accepted, with the cost to be determined.
I think they're talking about the big.
That's logging days.
Is that logging days?
Yes. That's also a holiday weekend. People go away, they don't have time to.
Why did Don pick that day?
That is when they will definitely have the dumpsters available for use.
It's kind of unfair to the public, too. What if they go away for a holiday weekend?
I think this was set by Don because of when he could get the dumpsters and have them in.
Does the fact that it's a holiday weekend incur any extra labor costs, I mean?
No, what the men have done previously is they get the, they take the comp time in order to, regular comp time, to do the.
And logging days only start till 11:00. They start at 9:00.
Yes, but what if you want to go away for the weekend?
They have their.
Or mis-logging days.
It's between September 15th and October 15th. So it was, he wanted, he said it would have to be either on October 7th or the 14th, and the 14th, the 7th is what worked for the highway department, for them to be able to get the dumpsters and such.
We are a town that has many events.
This is a multitask, isn't it?
It is. We do a lot of things, and people are good at it. If we weren't busy and we were sleepy, what are you going to do this weekend? We're going to go to dump day. Now, we're going to go to dump day, and we're going to.
You'll light or you'll log?
A motion to set cleanup day October the 7th, 9 to 2:00.
I'll make that motion.
A second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
I don't know.
It's either yes or no?
Yes. Yes. I said yes.
It's good that we're busy. It's good that we're busy.
What holiday is October 7th? It's an early calendar day.
I guess you just give your trash to your neighbor if you go away.
12, but 12 is later in that list.
5.3, the DVAA Big Eddie Film Festival requesting to block off the parking lot on the dates that have been submitted. And I think Jane had talked about, they want to use, originally, we were thinking about cutting it down the middle and then having them on the far side. Their request was specific to this side, so cut it down the middle and they can have to the library and then the public can report and use that on the Thursday night. A motion to...
I'll make that motion.
Request from the DVAA. I have a motion to second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Budget modi...
I'm sorry?
No more whispering.
I'm sorry.
I made that motion.
Who's going to tell DVAA that it isn't exactly how they want it? You will?
5.4, budget modifications. Move from general reserve, 36,000, to highway capital, 36,000. That's for the hunt payment. And move from general reserve, 64,000, to water capital, 64,000. That's for the Delaware engineering payment. I would make a motion to authorize those transfers. A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? 5.5, I believe it is, the resolution in opposition to the New York State Senate Bill, Senate Bill 00139B and Assembly Bill A123, 1358B. In view of reading the long one that has been submitted to the board, essentially is that the two-town justices have requested that the board pass this resolution in opposition to the bill, which states they want to have, and they're only starting with the top 100 courts, have them be admitted to the bar for a minimum of five years. So basically having attorneys be your local judges.
And that's the top 100 largest towns in the world?
Right.
So that's a...
They've tried to pass, and I think they tried to do all of them. So I think this is the way the state's kind of going.
Yeah.
We'll start with the largest and work our way down until everybody's gone, which in the end, I think, would create, as Kevin and I were speaking before, a larger burden upon a town financially in order to have judges that are appointed to the bar. If you could find them that would want to do it.
Been trying to do this for years.
And they're elected.
Yeah. I don't think they're trying to take it to make it be unelected. I think they're just trying to make it that you can only be eligible if you're...
No, I'm just saying that arbitrary distinction. We've had lawyer, we've had licensed lawyers run and not win.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I can tell you, Greg, that over the years, I've had, I've seen late judges who do a much better job than some of the judges who are attorneys.
I think this is a good time to call out David and Clu as well. They both, they both do their roles very well.
I would make a motion to pass the resolution in opposition as presented.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Let's see, 5.6, we're going to move that to 5.7. And 5.6 will be, well, number one was struck by lightning, and our new generator is now not working along with, I'm waiting for the report back from the superintendent regarding both things. I have contacted the insurance company to see what we can...
That's new generators?
Yeah. What, if anything, we can get a claim back on, but they are, Dave has been working trying to find out what the total damage is going to be. Right now, well three is running, which brings us to an issue that, the good doomsday scenario. Well three does not have a generator. Well one has a brand-new generator and doesn't work. It's something I think we need to look at. The last generator, I think, took eight months to come in.
When did that happen? Just had to happen just within the last week.
Monday?
Yeah, because we had our meeting.
Yeah. He came to let me know that, and then Dave, Jim asked me about contacting NIPA regarding the transformers that are down there also, so. 5.7...
Wait, I'm not up to that subject. Do you think that...
Too late.
Do you think, this sounds pretty serious.
It is serious, yes.
So do you think the board or sewer committee should meet and discuss that and have an extra meeting? Or it should be called to meet and discuss that?
You can be. You're going to have to do it with five days' notice because it's three of you. I don't, I don't know that you're going to need a meeting as much as, let's find out what it is. It's considered an emergency for the repair portions of it. But I think what the committee is going to need to do is come up with a scenario where we need to see what we need to do to bring well two back into service because it's been out of service.
It's been out for a very long time.
And we're going to need to think about well number three, getting some sort of a generator for that. You know, I'm not, I'm not sure what, I don't remember correctly why well two has been offline for so long.
It was from the flood. I think they didn't reestablish it. It's been offline for a while.
Yeah, I'm not sure. And then on the same, since we're on water and sewer, the generator at the sewer plant right now is inoperable. They've got a motor issue with it, and Jim is ordering a new, not a new, another radiator for it. He was able to find one, and then it was sold, and then he was able to find another one. And it also has some wiring issues. I don't know if that's part of the lightning strike or not. They didn't, they didn't say. That was a separate area.
Crystal had a point about being able to meet.
You can recess tonight's meeting if need be to have further discussions where the whole board is there, and as well your water company is there together. So much easier.
Yeah, but that means I got to come then.
You don't have to. There's more of them. Just sign, just sign.
5.7, I did get another letter from the library, from Fawn here at the library regarding the wall here. So I will reach out and see if we can find somebody to, to work on it. We haven't had much success on it. 5.8...
What did you say, 5.7? 5.8 is going to ask for animal control.
No, 5.6, I did the library, the library wall.
Wall.
Wall. I'm sorry. I lose my train of thought when this goes too long. 5.8 is animal control, and Nico has tendered his resignation as our animal control officer. So we need a resolution to accept the resignation, and we also need to look for another animal control officer or farm that out to, right now, I believe it's Liberty, and they are extremely busy. And this occurred in the middle of two incidences, so.
Yeah, did he give a reason?
I don't believe so, no. He said he was hanging up the hat. So he did not.
Didn't we used to contact with Hyland?
We did. That was one of the things that, contacting with Hyland was one of the things that I had spoken to Crystal about. We're going to get hold of Fawn and see if she is still doing it or willing to do it, and then contact Keshet and see who they use, see if we can piggyback with them. I would make a motion to accept the resignation of our animal control officer, Nico Juarez.
I'll second that.
All in favor? And take the time to thank Nico, because that is one of the thankless jobs that we have, and he's been in it for a while. Okay, the board is going to go into an executive session for the purposes of discussing the acquisition and disposition of real property. Before we do that, we will take public comment in case those people that don't wish to wait for us to come out of the executive session are here. So I'm going to move into public comment from the floor first. Yes?
I'm up there, there's...
Yes, please.
Sue Powell and I have heard her from property, and this is for Jane. We had to do some wildlife investigation and discovered...
I lied.
Thank you. And we discovered that there is an extremely rare dragonfly living on four contiguous lots, ours being one of them, from Hancock to Port Jervis. Only habitat in the world of this particular, anyway, okay. We were talking about open space. Could you just tell me where some of it is?
Oh, sure. Well, the Boy Scout properties are number one largest parcel, and then there's a number of hunting and fishing preserves. And I think on open space, I don't know the definition, but you know, a parcel of ten acres or more. I really don't know the...
Okay.
So, but there's quite a bit of open space in Tustin.
Thanks.
Quite a bit, yeah.
And then, are there any circumstances under which the pavilion would not be allowed to be built?
Can the UDC...
Yeah, I mean, if the UDC said, no, you can't do it, you know, it doesn't fit with our river management plan, then the choice would be if the town board says, well, that's okay. We're going to be out of compliance. We're going to build it. You know, they've got no enforcement action other than saying you'd be out of compliance. Other than that, I can't think of anything off the top of my head. I would defer to Ken, but I don't know that he would have anything that he could think of.
Thank you.
From the guests.
I would like to know, Jane, when you said that grant is a 50-50 grant, what is the price tag on that 50 for that grant? And in addition to that, I understand that there's going to be in-kind on the 50% that would be public. What is the grant for, the amount, and what monies besides in-kind would be...
Nothing. I did say it, but maybe the mic wasn't on when I, is it on now? The batteries are dying. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, the grant, the total grant is for two years. The total grant is $150,000. We have to match half of that, which is $75,000. Half of 75,000 is 37,500.
37,500.
So that, that would be an annual amount that we would be responsible for, of which I have asked the UDC for money. I just asked, that's why I was late defending that. I asked them for 25,000 of the 37,500. I don't think we'll get it, to be fair, but we'll get something. And the in-kind, I don't have the budget in front of me, but there's quite a bit of money in-kind because we have committee. We can charge the committee time. We can charge rental here. We can charge staff time. We can charge a lot of different things as in-kind. So you're asking me the bottom line of how much actual money is going to come? I don't have an actual number until I find out from the UDC, but I don't think it would, I'm hoping it won't be more than 12,000. Like, I can't guarantee that, but I'm hoping that.
And did you say that this is an annual amount?
For two years.
Just for the two years.
Yes, which is the length of the grant.
Thanks.
Again, I just think it's so remarkable that New York State DEC has found us to have global significance. I just think that we as good stewards have to protect that.
There is a definition of open space on newyork.gov. It's about seven pages long, so I won't read it, but if the people are curious, it's buried there.
Cash, did you have?
I did. More of a question than a comment, but while I was away for a few days, was researching shade structures for parks and pavilions, parks and recreation, and there are quite a number that you can buy sort of off the shelf, not Walmart specials, but, sorry, Mike, but...
I'm always looking out for the public purse.
I know, I know. I'm with you. But these are from, you know, playground suppliers, and my question was, does that go up against some sort of bid situation? If we were to find something that would satisfy our needs and that was within our means, that, these companies provide complete structures and install them, so that like, you know...
If you want, Cash, it would be good if you could either forward that to myself or Jane or any of the board, and we could give that to the building department to say, would this be considered a meeting structure? You know, is this going to require a kick in?
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Yes, Michael?
Just a, excuse me, talked about 93 Main Street and the digging and perimeter repair. There's now also some sort of issue down by Narrowsburg Proper across the way over to Cross Kirk Road, heading toward the plaza there. Is there a major structural issue there or was...
That turned out to be the water in the pipe. My understanding, and being down there with Don, is that the drain that went over to the manhole, the water wasn't getting into it properly and undermined.
And then it just obviously collapsed at a point there.
So they, they did put in a new pipe across the road, but then it's up to the proper to go to do the other part to see, you know, what the other damage might have been.
We've been coming back toward that.
But there's been issues there.
I guess my question is, has that become an ongoing infrastructure problem there? Or is this patch likely to hold?
Hopefully not at that spot. Don's hoping that that new pipe that he put in that went underneath the road would satisfy the future.
Knock on whatever.
Yes?
I just, one observation and one question. In terms of the deer population, there is contraceptive vaccine available and is used by the darts, and we have a kind of captive audience of the deer, so they wouldn't really be very hard, I think, to locate and deal with if we use that. And that does give a temporary, makes the temporal, the female makes it temporarily sterile. So that might be one approach, but I don't really know more about it than that. And my other question is just, which plan is going to be submitted to the UDC for the pavilion?
Right now, that we have agreed that it will be the last plan, not the first plan, but the second plan that came out, the smaller one.
Was that the 20 by 24 or the 30 by...
No, we have to use the drawings that we, the architect drawings that we have, so it would be the 24 by 30. Yes?
Hi. I have a question. We talked about the open plan, but what would Tustin actually be getting from that? Would they be getting a comprehensive plan? What would be the outcome of that open plan survey of, including recreation? And my second question was that we're, on the one hand, asking UDC for money, and on the other hand, it was said that we could just go ahead... on the other hand, it was said that we could just go ahead and be out of compliance. What would be the subsequent consequences of saying, we want your money, but we're not going to listen to you down the road?
That's a good point.
So those are my, my question and my observation.
I'll answer the second part before she does the first part.
I don't know, yes.
And that would, what it would do is it would hurt the town of Tustin when they go to the UDC and ask for financial assistance.
Down the road.
Which we do every year.
Right.
Which we do every year. We're actually one of the only townships that have requested money every year, it seems. They even mentioned that tonight. So your question as to what we get, what we get overall out of the open space plan. Well, we know that New York, no, we are hoping New York State will take over the Boy Scout property, and we would hope that maybe more of it would be opened up for public recreation. But let, there are several la, I don't know as well as you do, but there are several lakes on that property, and there's different habitat that exists there. So maybe we wanted to have a fishing spot. Well, maybe what we get from the open space plan is, don't go to that lake, go to this lake, because that lake has the box turtles, the dragonflies, et cetera. But this lake would be better, a better choice. The same thing for a hiking trail. So that's for the recreation part. For the private ownership part, if somebody comes and wants to subdivide a large, let's just say, again, this is not, this is not dictating to a property owner what has to be done. It's all suggested. It's not dictating. So let's just say a large hunting preserve decides, we don't want to do this anymore, we're selling our property, and a, what do you call those people?
Developers.
A developer buys the property. Well, we would have available in the open space plan an idea of how that property could be developed. If it's in a zone already that allows for development, we can't negate that, but we could say, again, put all the house, and I'm making this up, put all the houses over there and leave the rest open space because, et cetera, et cetera. So that's the kind of thing that comes out of it.
So it will be a plan that will recognize areas of particular conservation value as opposed to areas that are not.
Well, I hate to think that there's nothing, that there is no conservation, but yes, yes.
But that could, breeding spaces, utilization spaces.
Yes, yes.
For people and wildlife.
Yes, yes.
Oh, they're coming from the floor, yes?
Yes?
Zoom.
I wanted to know, since the property for the medical building is now up for sale, there are a lot of rumors going around about it. Is there anything, any information that you can provide about what's happening with that medical building?
Right now, I can tell you that the medical building is for sale with a deed restriction.
Does that deed restriction, must that deed restriction hold, or is that something that can be removed somehow?
My understanding is that they, it was tried by the current owner to have the deed restriction removed by the family of the people that were the original donors of the land, and they said no. So the deed restriction stays. If somebody buys the property, they are subject to the deed restrictions.
Which means that something medical has to be maintained there.
That's what the deed restriction says. Anybody from Zoom?
No.
And I would make a motion to enter an executive session for the purpose to discuss acquisition and disposition of real property. A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Well, you know where I'm adjourning to, so if you're not.
Which place? What do you want?
Down the block.
Esteli.
The most convenient. They're all invited. It's a framework commerce effort to draw up more business. Anybody who needs a, some food or a beverage.
File everybody out with it so we can get out of here.
Yes. I'll just make a public announcement. Public portion now being down at Esteli's.
Motion to come out of executive session.
We did that.
Is that on the record?
A motion to come out of executive session?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No decision has been made in the executive session. Do we wish to adjourn or recess?
What would we recess about?
If you wanted to have a sewer committee talk with.
I think we're waiting on information, correct?
Correct.
I suppose if, if we get an information and it becomes of great importance, we can have a.
I don't think it's going to happen.
As a member of the Water Committee, it would have been nice for something that's been in place for eight days, evidently, to have been communicated.
Notice, and I found out about this Monday, yesterday.
So when you said Monday, you mean it happened yesterday? Okay, I heard, I heard eight days ago.
Yeah, that was right after I found out that one of our Highwayman is leaving and.
Oh, yeah?
That would have been wrong, Greg. That would have been wrong.
So I guess I'll move that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Yeah, it was the 11th when we got the message from Fire Department.
Thank you. I misunderstood. It's the first.